I'd like to call to order the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of March 10th, 2010. Let the record show, all commissioners are present except Commissioner Dumas. Public comment period. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on any item not on the agenda, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public comment period is closed. Item number four, public hearing to consider the concept plan for the planning unit development Keystone of Galvez. And Derek, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, good afternoon.
Good evening.
I'm Jared Berger, representing Keystone of Galvez. Keystone of Galvez was originally approved on November 11th, 2004 by the Ascension Parish Planning Commission as a 318-acre residential subdivision. Originally, the subdivision was approved for 749 residential lots with overall density of 2.4 acres, 2.4 lots per acre. Since the original approval, Keystone of Galvez first filing consisting of 264 residential lots, major drainage and sewer improvements, off-site traffic improvements that benefit the Keystone community and surrounding areas, dirt work for the entire development, and a 78-foot-long clear span concrete bridge crossing the Henderson Bayou was constructed. Currently, Keystone of Galvez second filing is under construction consisting of 78 more residential lots. An additional 95 lots approved in 2004 will be constructed on the north side of Henderson Bayou in the future. We have been working diligently with the Ascension Parish Planning Commission staff to present to you a development that this parish can be proud of. We are proposing to rezone the remaining 171.4 acres as a PUD utilizing different lot sizes and land uses. This PUD will contain a total of 507 residential lots and 27,000 square feet of commercial. This will increase the number of the lots that was originally approved by 195 to 944 residential lots. We have a table to show you all the general land use categories. Low-density residential will be 20.1 acres. Percentage of the development will be 11.7 percent. 81 units. Purpose will be single-family residential at four units per acre. The medium-density residential will be 81.2 acres at 47.4 percent of the development. 356 units be single-family at 4.4 units per acre. The high-density residential, six acres, be 3.5 percent of the development, total of 70 units. The specific purpose will be townhomes at 11.7 units per acre. There will be a commercial section fronting Highway 933, total of about 27,000 square foot. Possible uses, retail, daycare centers, with the exclusion of alcohol establishments such as ballrooms, daiquiris shops, things like that. There is 2.6 acres of waterway that is Henderson Bayou that runs through the development that was improved in the first filing of Keystone. There'll be 58.9 acres or 34.4 percent of common and open space. Again, it gives you 171.4 acres in the development at 507 units per acre. The common and open space breakdown. Green space will consist of 20.3 acres at 34.5 percent of the development. That'll be permanently landscaped area. There's 17.1 acres of pond, 29 percent of the development, and this is actually wet detention pond areas that actually hold water year-round. There's a dry storm mitigation area, 9.8 acres, 16.6 percent of the development. Dry detention slash recreation slash play areas. There's 9.7 acres of recreational, 16.5 percent. There's also approximately two acres of municipal for public safety or fire station. Actually, this was in the proposal, but meeting with the fire department, they considered and letter I provided planning zone, there's actually four to five acres of usable property where we proposed donating to, and we're going to donate the entire section to the fire station. So that'll be a revision later. So approximately 21.5 acres of land will be donated for public use. Approximately four acres of the 21.5 will be for fire station. The dry stormwater mitigation area will be donated to the parish for recreation use. They've expressed some interest in that. The remaining uses will be green space, pond area, waterway. The waterways will have walking paths. Keystone will be constructed over approximately a 10-year period. The new PUD, the phasing will be based on the table up here. That's a phasing plan we worked out with planning and zoning. Some of those highlights, year 2011, approximately 100 lots. The internal recreation parks and walking trails will be constructed in the first filing. 2013, phase two, approximately another 100 lots. Connection to Pine Lake Drive will occur, and also the donation to the fire department and the remaining of the walking trails. 2015, phase three, approximately another 100 lots. We think the 27,000 square foot of commercial will be viable then, and possibly some more walking trails. 2017, phase four, approximately 90 to 100 residential lots. 2019, phase five, approximately 34 to 35 residential lots and 70 townhomes. As a part of this supplemental, revised traffic study was completed to determine what additional improvements, if any, were needed to the 195 lot increase. This study was conducted, excuse me, this study concluded that no additional off-site improvements were needed until the 725th lot for the entire development. What we mean by that is, we didn't take just the PUD, the 507 lots, and do a traffic impact study. We considered the existing lots of all of Keystone, and we included the 944 lots in our traffic study instead of just the 507. In the traffic study, we also did not include the connection to Pine Lake Drive. It was not included. So there is an extra connection out of this development not included in our traffic study. The developer has already installed the following improvements as shown on this table. I think the table's on the podium. I'll go through those improvements that's already taken place. Installation of a westbound right-turn lane on LA 933 at LA 44. That construction has been completed. Signal timing modifications at LA 933 and LA 44. That has been completed. Installation of a traffic signal at LA 932 and LA 933. A fee was provided to the parish for the future installation of this signal. I believe DOTD says it's not warranted yet, so the money's given to the parish for this signal, but they haven't allowed the signal to go up yet. Installation of an eastbound right-turn lane on LA 933 at Keystone Road. That construction has been completed. A four-way stop at LA 932 at Duval Road. The developer has provided the stop signs for future improvement. Signal timing modifications at LA 44 at Causey Road and Merritt Evans Road. That has been completed. With the new traffic study at 725 lots, a southbound left-turn lane on LA 44 at Parker Road, and also at LA 933. Improvement estimated being needed at 725 lots. This improvement is not only required for traffic generated by this development, but also based on existing traffic demands as a protected left-turn phase exists today. It is recommended that this improvement be funded through cost sharing. And what that means is, there's another new development right there at the corner, and they recommend trying to cost share with them. Installation of an eastbound right-turn lane on LA 933 at the proposed street, the retail entrance. Installation will be completed with construction of the proposed street. Installation of a westbound left-turn lane on LA 933 at Keystone Road. Improvement is estimated being needed at 725 lots. Construction will commence when warranted by additional traffic study. Installation of a northbound right-turn lane on LA 44 at Causey Road and Merritt Evans Road. And again, it'll be needed at 725 lots and warranted by an additional traffic study. While we were working with the planning zoning department staff, they requested we hold a public meeting with Pine Lake Drive of Timberlake Estates while proposing the connection to Pine Lake Drive. The meeting was held last Wednesday night. Their main concerns, as we can appreciate them, centered around traffic through their neighborhood. They did not want a new connection through Pine Lake Drive, and it's being proposed because, as y'all well know in the master plan, we do want connectivity and to try to move our traffic through, so we're trying to uphold the possible new master plan. Again, some other concerns were, they've had an existing flooding problem for years. They still worry about the flooding problem, and they expressed their flooding. It's been an ongoing problem for decades. Some other concerns were, they didn't think Pine Lake Drive had enough right-of-way, which we did do some research. It does have a 60-foot right-of-way, and it has 20-foot wide pavement on it. There was another request of us to get with the parish to bring someone out to investigate where we were looking at putting the connection to Pine Lake and make sure it wasn't going to affect some drainage. We did ask the, the next morning, actually, we asked the parish drainage manager to meet us out there. He did. He walked the site. He actually talked to one of the residents who asked for that to happen. He saw no real issue. We were just going to add the one road coming through the dry detention area, and it'll be covered so the water can flow between the two areas between the road, and he thought there would be no adverse effect, so. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Comment questions by commissioners.
What's the total number of lots that would be included in the original development? The 318 acres had 749 lots that were approved back in 2004. What will be the total number of lots once all of this would be complete? Is it 771?
No, sorry. It's additional 195 to give us 944. 507 with the new PUD, and then if you add the other ones, it'd be 944 total.
Okay. And then plus the additional commercial, 27,000 square foot commercial that wasn't before?
Yes, sir. That was not there before.
No further at this time. Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment, please sign in and state your name, and you'll have three minutes to comment, please. I would just ask that comments, you know, aren't redundant. We don't get repetitive. You know, that's, just ask for your consideration.
I understand.
Thank you.
First thing, I don't know how many of y'all, I live off of, my name is Kenny Mayer.
Thank you.
I live off of Henderson Bayou Road and Pine Lake Drive on the corner. Okay? This is, I don't know how many of y'all have been out in this area and looked where they're talking about. So I just had my son shoot a couple of pictures of what, you know, this is Henderson Bayou on this side, and this is going back toward where Keystone is in the rear. And there's no outlet sign, and back here, we got one that says children playing because our kids like to ride bicycles up and down everything, whatever, in the neighborhoods and stuff like that and all. I mean, and it's been a no outlet. Most of us out there, I've been there 23 years. Most of us out there have been there 15 to 20, 25 years. And when we got this notice, well, I never got a notice in the mail. One of my neighbors dropped it off and told me, "Do you know what's going on here?" You know, and that they wanted to open up in, you know, in Henderson, from Henderson Bayou and Pine Lake, Timberlake Estates until y'all deal. So I just kind of read up on things and just took a few notes down. And I mean, you know, they, you know, they said, you know, in this thing here that the parish did, you have to bear with me, I'm not a public speaker, but they mentioned something about, you know, due to the economy and marketability, we wanting to develop the latter part of our, you know, subdivision and the PUDs and all, and increase a bunch of, you know, to, you know, hey, we all affected in our economy when it comes to a lot of things. And now all of a sudden, they want to just move, you know, right on here in here and add another 195 homes that they're saying is not going to adversely affect traffic or whatever until they get past 750. Well, I mean, I know I own two vehicles, and if you got 944 homes that each own two vehicles plus, and they're traveling and shortcutting and running through everything else and all, not to mention the fact that, you know, you know, kids are not going to be able to do the things they were used to doing, you know. I mean, that's why we bought on a no-outlet street to start off with, you know, the years that we did, you know, buy into it. And, I mean, and they were talking about this smart, what did they term it, this smart growth thing and all, well, you know, by trying to do connectability and stuff like that and all, well, I mean, myself personally, I understand where they're trying to go with this, but I mean, you know, as far as I can, our situation is, I don't think it's too smart. They got 300 and how many acres there? They can make another connection off of 933 or whatever and do what they need to do as far as for, you know, getting the safety issue or whatever comes along as far as for getting people out of that subdivision.
Okay. That's time. Thank you.
My name is James Erickson. I live in Keystone Galvez subdivision now. I seem to be the only resident that I've talked to that received a letter because my property is lot 249, which will be, the corner of my lot will butt up against apparently a parking lot to these townhouses. So now, the fence that I'm currently constructing, obviously, is not going to be tall enough for someone in the second-story townhouse looking down at my backyard, along with the seven houses that they are currently constructing, the landfill right behind me. So now, I have two young girls, and we've moved eight times due to places that we lived. You know, affordable housing, as they're proposing for these townhouses, get letters in the mail, sex offenders. Had a peeping Tom I helped bust in my neighborhood. The guy that I knew was cutting my grass. Turned out, he became a child molester. Affordable housing, you know, was right there. And I finally moved out here. We invested everything we had. We used my one-time VA loan to buy this house. We waited 10 years to buy a house. We both got our degrees. My wife is a teacher right down the street at Carver. If this happens, if I got townhouses in my backyard, people looking down at me every day, we're going to have to leave this area again. I'm going to have to take a loss at it. I just can't feel safe if I put a swimming pool in my backyard, my two young girls are out here swimming, and I get to look at the second story of people's houses. If they move these townhouses further away, you know, where they don't look down at people's backyards, that won't be so bad. I know that we probably won't have a chance to stop any of this. Economic growth is, you know, what it's all about. It doesn't matter the quality of life that it affects for us, but, I mean, I'm just saying, after 10 years of waiting to buy a house, it really upsets everyone. My wife is in tears every night since we found this out. I would request that we, as residents, have an additional 30 days to inform other people of what's going on, to have them put their public opinion in, because nobody in my neighborhood that my wife got out and talked to knocking on doors received any kind of notification. Nobody had bought in the neighborhood, knew this was coming. They all had the same comment. They would not have bought in Keystone Galvez had they known this is going to be a cut-through, rental property or privately owned. I'm not sure what the townhouse is going to be. I'm sure if they're rental property, there's no pride of ownership there. There's nobody out there, you know, maintaining their own yards, improving their houses, proving their lots. I already have a drainage problem in my yard. I have the sewer hole in my yard now, and I'm getting the runoff from everywhere. The developed land behind me, which is higher, now I got a huge hole flooding all the time now as it is. And, I mean, that's going to hopefully be addressed later, once they get through developing the property. I'm bringing in dirt myself, trying to raise it up, but the townhouses are not going to help my drainage problem at all either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Liz Abbott. I happen to live at 42138 Duval Road, which actually butts up against the rear end of Keystone Development. My problem is with the traffic study. This is the first time we've been notified of any kind of planning or development about this subdivision since it's been in development. I have several questions. I know you all did a traffic study for, is it Pine Road or Pine Street? Was there a traffic study done for Duval Road? Our street is only 18 feet wide. We are supposed to have an ordinance that prohibits large trucks, such as cement trucks and other commercial vehicles, from traveling down our road, yet they're there every day. Sunday, we counted 10 cement trucks go down our road. We are now experiencing some breakage in the concrete on the road surface itself. We worry about the bridge that is at the end, was right before the dead end, before the street was cut through. We're worried about the weight of these trucks on that bridge, and we're also worried about the fact that where the two streets are united, the new part of Duval Road to the existing part of Duval Road, it already has a dent, and the more traffic that goes through there, the worse that that bump is going to get. We'd like to know if there is any type of provisions for expanding our road, prohibiting trucks from going down our road. It was our understanding that those commercial vehicles were supposed to come through the main entrance on 933. We have a major concern because we have children in that area, and it is not safe for these trucks to come down. Also, we are looking to see, I understand that DOTD has not allocated the four-way stop at Duval and Merritt Evans and Josephario. Someone needs to come there at 5:00 in the afternoon and see the traffic that comes through there that turns from Merritt Evans onto Duval Road, not onto, I'm sorry, onto Josephario, and also the amount of traffic that has occurred since this subdivision has been opened up from the Keystone down to Duval to Josephario. I speak of experience with this, the danger of that intersection. Two years ago, I was involved in a major automobile accident and spent six months recovering from it. Since we've been there since November of 2005, we have had eight major accidents there with three fatalities. I am begging you to get behind DOTD, to put a four-way stop sign, to check out the weight allowance on the bridge, and also to prohibit the trucks from coming down that street unless provisions are made to widen and strengthen the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Luen Johnson. I live at the very end of Pine Lake, Pine Lake Drive, 30 feet from where this new fire station is proposing to be built. Now, I don't know how many of you have even seen this property. Aside from the acreage that they're donating to the fire department, the rest is just giant mud holes. They're talking about running the road through so the parish can enjoy the recreation. There's no recreation to be enjoyed out there. It's a giant snake pit, fills up with water every time it rains. It's unusable. The road that they're planning on running through Pine Lake Drive, the way it would have to run from what they showed, my husband was the gentleman that one of the parish guys talked to, the way they would have to run this road, on one side of the road, you're going to have an eight-foot drop-off. It's a traffic nightmare for the future. You're going to have teenagers running this road, making this, it's a very curvy road what they're planning on building. They will be missing the curb in the hole. I mean, it's, if these people want a PUD, that's fine, but it should be at their expense. Let them give up some of the decent land they have in the front, build decent recreation, give up some decent land for these 2,000 children that's going to be living in there to go to school. Putting a strip mall up front, a fire department in the back, some townhouses will not make this a PUD. It will still be a giant subdivision with a strip mall up front, a fire station in the back, and townhomes. It will not be a PUD. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Derek, you're, Jared, you want to address the comments, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Couple comments. First one, being that was concerned about, we're not doing anything till 725 lots are sold? Well, the reason being, if you remember when the original PUD was, was, not, excuse me, PUD, when the original Keystone was approved, those traffic improvements that I talked about in the first slide on traffic was for 749 lots. So our traffic engineer recommended at 725, take another look at it. You may need it at 725. You may not need to do anything till 750. But we pulled back off of the 750 and did it at 725. So that's why we don't have any improvements till 725, because we've already done for 750 Gentleman talked, was talking about the townhomes. It is a possibility they could be two stories, but if it was a residential lot, someone could build a two-story home there and have the same vantage point. The townhomes will have a 60-foot buffer, so that will help. Another problem residents, resident expressed was the concrete trucks coming down Duval Road. We are trying to get our builders to use the main road. Once we sell the lot, it's hard for us to govern. We're talking with them and trying to get them to use our road, but unfortunately, we can't make them. If there is a weight limit on the road, I'm not sure if there is. Possibly we can get the sheriff's department involved to possibly govern those weight limits, but unfortunately, we just don't have a lot of control after the lot is sold. When we develop a subdivision, our developer hires that contractor, and he will not use Duval Road. He will use our road. Unfortunately, we can't, we can't make the builders. We can ask them and try to communicate with them. We'll try to do a better job at that. We'll try to do a better job at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Comments, questions by commissioners?
I've got a question. Go back to the buffer around the townhomes, that's a landscape buffer, right?
Hello, my name is Derek Murphy with Quality Engineering. We have been working with the planning and development staff throughout this whole process, and we introduced townhomes into this development with their recommendation. We are, we did provide a 60-foot green area. We put, basically, we have alleyways inside this townhome community with the townhomes facing a 50-to-60-foot green space buffer. One thing we did was put one of these green space buffers right against the existing lots in there to help buffer them from a land use, which is, they are landscape requirements in the parish now, and this exceeds, far exceeds anything as far as those buffers are concerned.
Derek, one of his comments, the gentleman, I think he said he lived in a lot too far now, that actually is going to back up to another residential lot and not a townhome though, isn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, and if I'm looking at the, the big map, right, the, the yellow part around the, the townhomes will be residential lots.
Sorry, can I say that again?
Yeah, um, on the smaller version, that you're, you're showing the residential lots around the townhomes, which should prevent any two-story problems, because they all, they all, all those lots face the townhomes, and there shouldn't be any, any backyards other than maybe Lot 125. Should be the only lot that would...
Right, and the 125 has a 60-foot green space buffer.
Okay.
And, and just to, you know, just to also reiterate, any lot adjacent property owners, you know, those notices were sent out. And now, granted, most of, some of those lots have not been sold, that touches our PUD, but all those notices were sent out.
Now, the, there was quite a few comments about this recreation area also. Didn't the parish request that as a recreation area?
Yes, sir, they did. Uh, we've actually had recreation out there, we've had councilmen out there, we've had the drainage department out there looking at all of this, we had the fire department we met with out there. So, we're, we're not trying to hide anything, we're showing them, hey, this is, you know, there's a ditch running through it, there's a dry mitigation area that, that does get inundated when it rains. And they still wanted the property, so we, we gave them the property. Uh, we're also providing a park up there in the middle by the bridge, if you look, uh, you know, so we are providing, you know, another recreational facility besides this one down here in the bottom, a more centralized area.
So, it, it wouldn't remain a mud hole? Because that was one of the comments that made, and, you know, and it is wet, or...
It is going to be wet, I mean, it's a dry mitigation area that, that gets wet and dries out, gets wet, dries out, I mean, that's, that's its function.
But you, you think or feel certain that the Recreation Committee or Commission will improve that area and get, get rid of some of the underbrush and...
If they want to use it, yes, they'd have to do that. And, and they expressed, if they, you know, if they get the property, that would be, you know, it'd be, they want it to be usable. So that's some things that they would do.
The only other thing I, oh, and I don't think y'all were required to do this, but was there any type of traffic survey that is going to throw it down Pine Lake Drive? Do y'all have any idea how much, how much will be going through there?
This is Nick Folito with Neil Schaefer, he's our traffic engineer, he performed the traffic study.
Yeah, Nick Folito with Neil Schaefer. I'd answer your question, I mean, it's, it's hard to estimate what that volume would be when that connection's made. You know, these, these volumes and distributions are estimates based on existing traffic patterns that we see out there today. And since that connection's not there today, it's, you know, it's, it's tough to estimate what that volume would be in the future.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, the bulk of the traffic will be going toward 933 and down Deval Road toward Joseph Arrio Road?
That's correct, with the majority of it going to 933.
Nick, what, what's the connection on the other side, if it goes through Pine Lake?
Yeah, it'd be Henderson Bayou, Henderson Bayou.
Let's wait.
So it still goes the same place, north and south? East, west, north, south?
Any other questions, comments?
Some of the residents mentioned drainage issues. Have you all tried to address all their drainage concerns?
There've been drainage issues out here before the subdivision came in. Talking to Bill Rue out there, there is plans to do Henderson Bayou pump station and that kind of stuff, and he claims that that's going to help this area. Uh, we, the drainage problem that we addressed was the one that we had on our site. I, I do know, by looking out there, they do have drainage problems, they've, and I've talked to the residents and everything, there is drainage problems out there in that area. And they've been out there for, you know, for as long as anybody can remember. So, the drainage areas that they're speaking of on their property, no ma'am, we have not addressed those drainage issues.
Well, those drainage problems though, those are actually to the east of your development, correct? It doesn't have anything to do with them. They were required, when they first proposed this development, they were required to improve Henderson Bayou within the confines of their development. And they did that. What's out, Henderson Bayou outside the development, that, these people need to go to the drainage board. That's their baby, they need to take care of that. So, their drainage problems are not part of this. Their drainage problems are separate. And that's, that's, we've got documentation to, to back that up.
If I could, most, most of the, the water problems that they're expressing is a backwater problem from the Ameet through the Henderson Bayou Basin. And again, those backwater problems can't be addressed through Keystone and Galveste. It has to be a regional approach, which, like Mr. Murphy stated, the parish is working on it. They're actually in design right now of a, a massive pump station and flood gate, flood control on, on the Henderson Bayou downstream, which is supposed to take care of a lot of this problem. It, it probably wouldn't protect up to 100-year massive flood, but a lot of the backwater problems that they're, they're experiencing, but according to the drainage manager, should be handled when that floodgate. And unfortunately, it's not going to be today, it's, the plans are in design now, construction by next year, probably two years before it's actually, from today, it's actually implemented. So, there is a regional approach to that drainage, but unfortunately, we can't fix it. Yes, ma'am.
One more question, the lady that lived on Deval Road had a comment about the stop signs at Deval and Joseph Arrio. Y'all have already bought the signs, but DOTD wouldn't let y'all put them up, is that, am I correct in that?
I'm not sure we have bought it, and from, I'm not sure what Jack said, but basically DOTD won't let them put it up. And that same thing with the signal at 932 and 933.
Yeah, the signal. I can understand the signal. Nick, what, you don't put the stop sign?
Well, just like a signal, there's certain warrants that have to be met to, for the installation of a four-way stop, just like a traffic signal. And currently, those volumes do not meet those warrants for the four-way stop currently today. This is what DOTD's stance is.
How close is it?
I don't know.
It's got to be close.
Well, you know, it's, it's, you got to look at all four approaches, and the volume on Deval Road is, is not, it's not there. It's there on the north-south roadway, you have the volume to meet that warrant. It's the side street that you don't. So, you know, as the side street volume increases over years, you know, then that, when they feel that it's met, then they'll allow the installation of that four-way stop.
Okay, thanks.
Got a question pertaining to the staff recommendation. Uh, staff recommends the applicant delineate a more detailed phasing plan prior to the concept plan approval. Is that, you wanting more than what was shown to us in their little slide presentation tonight? Because that seemed to be pretty specific.
What was shown tonight wasn't delineated when this was reviewed the first time.
Okay. What they showed tonight, does that remedy this comment?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And we actually put out a 10-year plan and phasing to show them what different phases in the lots, if they just want to meet the staff. We didn't hand it to you guys, because they, I don't like that, but we've tried, we wanted to show you that we did do it, we did work that out with staff. And the comment came later, then we could get back to them with the homework package. So, we did work all that out, and that wasn't tweeted in the slideshow tonight.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when they do the townhome site, they will come to us to, to at least look at the layout somewhat, parking and...
You know, I, I can't tell you all the steps that they're going to go through, but they've got a lot more steps to go through before this thing is going to get approved. And as they submit filings, yes, those are going to be coming forward.
Right.
Guess my main concern that hasn't been addressed, I think we have things in place that address traffic and drainage, is the increase of 195 lots, which is 26 percent. Maybe somebody could explain what, what's the driving force, what's the need to increase 26 percent of the lots from where it was previously approved?
Well, basically, 50-foot lots is what is, is out there. 50-foot and 60-foot lots is what's selling, and that's the product we're putting on the ground. The 70-foot lots aren't, aren't selling right now. So we're trying to meet market demand, just like everyone else, trying to give the client what they want. And, uh, so that's, that's where a lot of this is stemming from, putting the product on the ground that works. We're still, if you note, we're still under, are still right at the three units per acre. And we were originally at the 2.4 units per acre. We're now, if this was on RM, we still would be allowed to three units per acre, but the 70-foot lots is what keeps us not being able to achieve the three, three, three units per acre. So, even, even now, with everything, all the green and so forth, we're still at the three units per acre for the entire development.
Any other questions, comments, this time? No other questions, comments, what is the wish of the commission?
I'll offer a motion to recommend approval to the parish council.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Marshon to recommend approval to the council, seconded by Commissioner Wells. Any opposition?
I oppose.
Commissioner Barrow opposed. Any other opposition? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All right, we'll adjourn and reconvene in about 10 minutes, good people.